Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Any public information from the board? Jamie?
Mine's kind of long. Do you want to go first here?
You go.
Okay. All right. So I wanted to open with a quote folks may have heard this week on Friday, the 28th, from Liz Cheney. Generations of American patriots from our revolution onwards have fought for the principles Zelensky is risking his life to defend. But today Donald Trump and J D Vance attacked Zelensky and pressured him to surrender the freedom of his people to the K G B war criminal who invaded Ukraine. History will remember this day when an American president and vice president abandoned all we stand for. My grandmother served in World War II, fighting fascism and the rise of the Nazi Party. I remember him telling me about his why. His why was so that the citizens of the United States would never have to surrender their right to live freely. They would never have to hide for fear that their very existence would make them a target. This past Friday, I had to watch as other veterans cried watching our current president, presidential administration humiliate President Zelensky. This is shameful and unacceptable to myself and the citizens of our free country. What is happening to Ukraine is a violation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. As our Declaration of Independence states, whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it. The very tenets upon which we have built this great nation are being abandoned, and it is more important than ever that we as leaders not only clearly state our support for the country of Ukraine, but also for what we as United States citizens stand for. As Martin Luther Luther King Jr. said, in this unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such thing as being too late. There is no time for apathy or complacency. This is a time for vigorous and positive action.
Jamie?
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah. It is the day of public comment. My public comment is in regards to the comment that we keep getting regarding the R T E and no taxation without representation. And I wanted to address that. Were you going to Jerry? Was that yours? Okay.
No, no.
It was. And I would like to point out that we have representation in the community in which we have our, claim our primary residence. So it is not that they are without representation. You have representation. It just happens to be where you have your primary residence. And I also would like to make a brief comment about this idea that it is somehow unfair to, that it implies that is unfair to pay taxes and not have a right to vote. And that line of thinking is a little bit too close to, well, I have enough money and wealth, I should be allowed to vote in more than one place, and it's unfair that I don't get to. And I refuse to let that erode at the local level. And in our previous meeting, I went into the history of who was allowed to vote and who wasn't. And I would like to say that that is not what our democracy is founded on. We are one person, one vote, and we have seen the myriad ways in which too much money in politics has not been good at any level. And it's one person, one vote. And if this makes you uncomfortable, maybe it should make you uncomfortable. Having more wealth and more privilege does not grant you an extra vote. And I don't think you should think it is unfair that you don't have extra access to shaping and forming policy in more than one place, simply because you have the money to do so.
Thank you Suzanne. Jerry?
I'm a bit more mundane, just to remind people that we spring forward on Sunday for the clocks. So just remember, remember that so that
We lose an hour Jerry.
We lose an hour of sleep, but it isn't, it's, it's light later in the evening. I always kept my, my clock in my bedroom at home when I was a kid on daylight savings time because I hated standard time, but whatever. But just remember, meetings next week, time's a little different, so.
Thank you, Jerry. Bob, did you have anything?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thanks Bob. I have one quick thing. The library is doing their strategic planning and they have a survey on their website. Takes less than five minutes, I was told. I haven't done it yet, but less than five minutes to give some input on what you'd like to see as far as programming and things happening at the library. Did I say that correctly, Mary? Pretty much, pretty much what's happening? All right, good. Okay. So you could either do it online or in person or, okay, great. Anyone from the public? There is one hand up. Please state your name and if you could give us your primary residence too, please.
Kathy?
Kathy Daw.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. So my name is Kathleen Daw. I, my home is at 130 Salt Winds Drive, and I've been an Eastham resident for 24 years. I'm here tonight to express my disappointment with the select board's preliminary decision to adopt the real estate tax exemption for Eastham and to express my opposition to that decision. It's important to restate a point that has been made previously by other speakers, but I don't think that we can ignore it. Part-time residents do not oppose the idea of providing tax relief and/or tax assistance to members of the Eastham community who need financial assistance, even if that requires additional tax. Part-time residents do oppose the blanket application of a real estate tax exemption for all full-time residents regardless of their economic situation. The select board's decision appears to be based on the assumption that all full-time residents are in financial need and all part-time residents are wealthy. And we just heard that. I know part-time residents who are struggling to hold on to their family homes that were purchased at a time when Eastham real estate prices were more affordable. They include part-time neighbors who are retired, having purchased homes 30 or more years ago, and who can just manage to pay their increasing taxes along with other increases and expenditures, just like full-time residents. Part-time residents who inherited homes and who struggled to maintain these family homes and pay increasing taxes, just like full-time residents. And there are many more examples. In the absence of a data-driven analysis of all taxpayers' financial status, it's not possible for the town to accurately assess the situation. However, if one looks at the recent climate action survey conducted in Eastham in 2024, there's a remarkable similarity in the self-identified financial status of full-time and part-time residents who describe themselves as financially careful. The definition of financially careful is that respondents can meet their basic financial needs, but don't have much left over for significant discretionary spending. In the age group of folks 65 to 74, 34% of both full-time and part-time respondents describe themselves as financially careful. Exactly the same. In the age group of 75 plus, 17% of both full-time and part-time respondents describe themselves as financially careful. These two age groups alone represent 62% of all respondents to the survey. The one age group ages 35 to 54, which represents 13% of total respondents, there's a disparity between the full-time and part-time residents where 25% of full-time residents describe themselves as financially careful and 13% of part-time residents do the same. This group has been identified as a target for funding using the taxpayer assistance fund. These statistics, which have limitations due to the number and mix of respondents, can nevertheless challenge the assumptions made about the financial situation of part-timers versus full-timers. I encourage the select board to review their approach to the R T E and to adopt a means-based R T E. This can be done in concert with providing easy access for full-time residents to take advantage of existing Eastham programs, including the family support package, community preservation funds, programs that already exist to assist veterans, seniors, and people with disabilities. Perhaps funding the newly available taxpayer assistance fund with monies that must now be used to prepare Eastham for the implementation of the R T E, estimated to be more than $60,000, could easily provide much of the needed funding for those full-time residents who need support. Thanks for your attention this evening.
Thank you Kathy, but could, I asked before you spoke if you could state your address and your primary residence, please.
My present primary residence is New York.
Thank you. And you're a member, you are the vice president of the Part-Time Resident Taxpayer Association?
I am.
Thank you. All right. No one else? We'll move on. Shellfish regulations. Stephanie Sykes, Shellfish Constable, Jerry's going to read the
Public hearing for self, shellfish regulations pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 130, a select board public hearing will be held on Monday, March 3rd, 2025 at 5:30 PM in the Earl Mountain Meeting Room at the Eastham Town Hall, 2500 State Highway, and by remote, remote participation to review shellfish regulations. A list of proposed changes will be available on the town's website at www.eastham-ma.gov.
Take it away Stephanie.
Thank you. I'll summarize a little bit. I know you have the memo, but I'm just going to go through very quickly the distinction because you'll see the language is a little bit similar. Right now, the interpretation of that regulation is that there's no shellfishing when it, the air temperature is below 28 degrees. So it was brought forward to the Orleans Shellfish and Waterways Committee by our shared body of permit holders. And so we are now having this public hearing for specifically Eastham permit holders. We received very similar feedback from that pool of commercial permit holders indicating that that particular regulation has been inhibitory to their businesses in certain circumstances. And the permit holders that are advocating for this to move forward are fishing by boat or they're either on boats in Cape Cod Bay, or they're jerk raking or some similar raking in Town Cove area. So areas that don't become dry on any day's tide. So that's really the distinction between the proposed language. No person may dig, scratch, salt, any shellfish on dry ground or on shore areas that may become dry on any day's tide when the air temperature reads under 28 degrees. So 28 degrees, still the temperature for dry digging, but that's really what we want to avoid to protect seed is that we don't have folks dry digging or, you know, digging and raking in very shallow water. That's, that area is then going to be exposed in maybe an hour or so. So being conscious of protecting seed, but also advocating for the few commercial shellfish businesses that we do have. And we have quite a few younger permit holders that are go-getters and are trying to take advantage. One of the comments that's come in from a few of those folks since the memo is really the tides that they've had challenges with are where the temperature reaches above 28 during the day, but they lose a day of fishing because they're fishing by the tide. And some of those areas, particularly Marsh and the Cove and the Bay, they're already, they're up there. But if it's 25 during the tide and then it goes up to, you know, might go up to 35, that kind of, what's the difference? It's a subtitle area. So hopefully that clarifies the distinction to the updated language.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone from the board have any questions? Go ahead.
So I see we have some representatives here too from the group as well. And I'm assuming that's to endorse this document that we're looking at now and these changes? Yeah.
Come on down. Yeah.
You're not going to, yeah, be able to show up without going up to a microphone.
Yeah. Hi guys. Craig Pousik in Orleans. I am the vice chair of the Orleans Shellfish and Waterway Advisory Committee. And we wrote this, we changed these proposals and we of course had to reach out to Eastham and say, you know, make sure that you comply. There was a question about water temperature and being maybe too cold for the shellfish to be able to dig back in. If, let's say you have, you make a, you make a little scratch and you have 20 legal and a half a dozen subs. When the water's warmer, they dig in pretty quickly, but when the water's cold, they really don't. So if you're looking at, let's say you have air temperature of like 32 or 22, water temperature is probably still around 40 or below. So there's really no difference. The, the shellfish will probably not dig in. So there's a good chance of losing those shellfish. And that was a concern. But like I said, even if the air temperature is 32, you're still going to have the same situation. So if that's a concern I've earned you, that might be, might call, call the answer, give you an answer. A concern was anybody fishing by boat, either the Cohoggers, the 30, 40 footers in Cape Cod Bay, or even someone bull raking or jerk raking in the, in the Cove. If they put their catch on deck and it's below 28, that product is probably going to freeze. But that's not the concern of the Shellfish Advisory Committee. That's the concern of the fishermen. And the fisherman knows that they're not going to, that they're going to, the buyer will not take their product if it's frozen, especially Cohogs. So we kind of set that aside and say, well, the fishermen know they have the cover of the tarp or something, so at least they can, you know, keep it from freezing. So those are the two, the two biggest concerns that we had as a committee and everything else we pretty much agreed with. The people digging this time of year, it's a small group. And some people may say, well, why are we, you know, catering to a small group of fishermen? Doesn't matter. They're there and they're doing it and it's their daily, their daily income, you know? So if, if we can help them, that's great. And it's all subtitle anyway. So that's pretty much what we, we came up with, so.
Cool. Thank you Greg.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone online, anyone else wish to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions, comments? Think it sounds pretty sensible? So when you vote, motion to approve the shellfish regulations as presented?
I, I move we approve the Shellfish Regulation 5.9, Temperature Restrictions as Presented.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, we'll call the vote Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye.
Thank you.
Hard remembering all your names there for a second. Don't switch seats. All right. Emergency, emergency response update. We have Fire Chief Lisa Albino and Police Chief Adam Bohannon here. And this was Bob Brunz, one of our board members, just had a question about disaster preparedness. And I told, I asked him to get involved with CERT, so maybe when he gets we can, we can get him in and go to some training. That would be fun.
Thank you. I know a lot of these questions came up about wildfires in California, now in Carolinas, unfortunately. So we'll, I'm going to try to, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to update you on our emergency management preparedness and what we do during an emergency. And I'll do this as quickly as possible and then we'll take specific questions about the fires or anything else that you have. I just pulled a quick definition of emergency management. I'm sure there's 100 of them out there. The one, the thing I liked about this is that it uses the word framework because we're never completely preparing for any particular situation. They're all a little bit different. It's not like if there's a big snowstorm coming, we turn to page 26 and take the direction from it. There's always a curve ball thrown at you in any situation. So it's preparing, training people, preparing equipment, developing relationships with local partners and being, having the resources we need to act to any situation that comes up. Planning for future events, blue sky times. We're coordinating with our local partners, Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Committee is what that stands for. We meet monthly with them to discuss regional efforts to plan for emergencies. We hold our public safety, public safety, Eastham Public Safety Meetings quarterly here to discuss as each season is approaching, what we're doing to prepare for potential storm threats generally in those, in those times. National Park Service has a law enforcement division, a firefighting division, and DPW division to some degree. So we're always coordinating with our partners there as well. Eastham CERT, as was just referenced, which is Citizens Emergency Response Team. We have a small group of about seven or eight members. You may have seen them at town meeting, helping with some parking and direction. We use them at Windmill Weekend, our drive-through flu clinic most recently, and they'll be back at town meeting in May, hopefully. Center for Cultural Studies, that's kind of a side project. They actually approached me with some flooding maps of the community and I'm working to create some pre-staged code red groups so that if there's flooding coming or potential flooding coming, we can send out a message to those particular areas of town that should pay attention to the storm and potentially see flooding. For staff and equipment, I C S is Incident Command System. So that's not just for incident commanders, that's for every level of public safety or really every level of, I guess, government to some degree, to understand during an incident, how the command system and I guess what your role in that system looks like. So we're always working on training there. Tabletop exercises, we've done two of them now, large-scale tabletop exercises, and I think we're probably due for another one this fall, maybe. People think of emergency management as police, fire, and DPW. It really touches every single department in our town. And we got full participation from every department in the town of Eastham at those tabletop exercises, which I thought was pretty admirable. We've used the Recreation Department to help us with warming centers and, and sheltering. The Council on Aging is always helping us reach out to vulnerable members of the community that may need extra help from us. So, you know, health during the pandemic, it's, it goes, it really touches every department. So we're very blessed here to have buy-in and, and help from all those departments. Equipment, planning, purchasing, maintenance. We're always reviewing our equipment. Do we have the right equipment? Is it maintained? Is it going to work when we need it to work? And what do we need to plan for, for the future? Planning for an imminent event. This is when, you know, there's going to be a blizzard in three days. We know it's coming. There's going to be power outages. Conference calls with Barnstable County, they have a meteorologist on staff there that gives us kind of the snapshot into Cape Cod, because we all know weather is special on Cape Cod and changes at any moment. Local coordination with Eastham Public Safety, Eastham Town Management, and then our other town departments, which we had this conversation a few years ago and we realized that maybe we weren't communicating the information out to our other departments well enough. Police, fire, and DPW are together all the time, but you know, if we're going to ask for help from the Council on Aging, we got to tell the Council on Aging what's happening and what might arise during the emergency. So trying to be better at that, getting the information out to everybody in town, not just the, the three main emergency management departments. Coordinating with CERT, putting them on standby and any other outside agencies, whether it's the Barnstable County, Mima, or our, our local Wellfleet Orleans partners. During that preparation, the Fire Department, Police Department, DPW, also planning staff levels. We're identifying points of contact in the other departments. If we need the Council on Aging, who do we call during a snowstorm? Or the Recreation Department, who's on call for them? And we're checking on our equipment to make sure it's prepped and ready to go. This is the training room at the Police Department on the left-hand side. This is what it looks like today for training purposes. The right-hand side is what it looks like during a storm. So it gets set up as our Emergency Operations Center. This is where in a major incident, we actually haven't activated this since January of 2022, when we had all those snowstorms and power outages. But during that time, in that room, pretty much 24 hours a day was a representative from police, fire, and DPW. And then we add from there, which is on the next screen. So emergency manager, I am the emergency manager as the police chief for the town of Eastham. Some depart, some towns is the fire chief, some it's the police chief, some employ a separate emergency manager, but I am the emergency manager for Eastham. Police, fire, DPW representatives are always present or mostly present in the, the Emergency Operations Center. And then sometimes town management, we may also designate a separate public informations officer. Utilities will come in if there's major power outages or other problems. Other departments, we may pull them in if it was a pandemic example, obviously health would be very important. We may have a CERT member in there, depending on what we're using CERT for and how many CERT members we have available. We may bring in a communications person, like one of our dispatchers, to just do communications for us. I think one example of maybe expanding that list, like on the left, on the right-hand side, is the tornadoes that went through Harwich a few years ago. It was kind of a, you know, you got 20 minutes warning that there might be a tornado coming and there was mass destruction with major decisions that needed to be made very quickly to respond to that. So we would have probably a larger number of people, people in our operation, Emergency Operations Center after something like that. There's financial decisions obviously also that need to be made there. Just some quick pictures from ongoing. You've got the snow pictures, flooding issues. This shows you that this is our retired Fire Chief Dan Keane and myself, but this was during those storms in 2022. Everybody does, takes a role in responding to emergencies, including your chiefs during that, during those storms. Again, every storm is different. You never know what you're going to encounter and it's all hands on deck to, to make sure we keep our residents as safe as possible. I won't go into my generator story again. I'm sure you've all heard it 100 times, but you never know what's going to happen during a storm, even the generator failing at the police station.
But we got through it.
We did get through it. One thing we've tried to improve on during storm situations in the last few years is public information and getting information out. Code red is, as you know, is a huge help for that. But we find that if we get information out on a regular basis, people feel much more comfortable that, you know, I, I don't have the ability to go restore your power, but I'm talking to the people that will restore your power and we have, you know, we're advocating for you. We're pushing forward. We have a timeline. We can plan ahead. And it, I think residents appreciate getting that information out. So we try to push that out as much as possible. Code red is the main one in those situations because I think a lot of people are on code red. Not everyone's on social media. We do use social media, but we really revert to code red during those situations as the primary communication source. If you have anything to add, jump in. I'm just kind of blasting through.
Blaster it.
Shelter operations. Yeah. Nocet High School is our, our regional shelter for the lower Cape. During the construction over the last couple of years, we've not been able to use Nocet High School. We had the elementary school set up as our, our kind of temporary shelter. We never needed to use it, thank goodness, because it wasn't set up perfectly for it. We're now back at the high school. So, and to the point now where some of the cafeteria staff has offered to cook food for us during sheltering operations. So we're actually advancing and getting things a little more squared away over there. So we'll continue to work on that. Shelters are made for overnight sheltering. They provide food and water, sleeping arrangements, shower facilities. They're very structured. You have to sign in, sign out. There's health screening. It's made to go, so you can go live there for a day or two, three, four, if you need to. They're not hotels though. You're not going to be comfortable there. The beds are not, you know, they're not king beds with double padded mattresses there. It's not
Not even twins.
They're not, not even twins. The food is going to be, you know, donuts and pizzas. It's not going to be the best, you know?
It's not going to be clam chowder.
It's not going to be clam chowder. We had a request for it the last shelter. But they're made to provide people a place to be warm, to be safe, survive through the storm until we kind of start to put the pieces back together and get people home. Now, the goal when we open a shelter is to close it as soon as possible. So we want to open the shelter, bring people in, get the problem fixed, and transport them home. We need to do that even more than some because our shelter is a school. So the school wants to reopen as soon as they can. We need to get cleaned up and get out of there. Warming centers, and I think I'm out of order here, but warming center, we use the Eastham Library as our, as our warming center. You can see on the, on the left there, that's Christine and Jake from the, from the beach department. One of your own, Jamie Dimitri in the middle there. And Nathan Garen, who gave us some help for a couple of years at our warming center. The point of the warming center is really just a safe place to come, charge your phone, warm up, cool down, depending on, on what time of year it is. But it's not meant to be an overnight, long-term thing. It's come in, do what you need to do, go, you know, go back home or go, go visit a friend or something like that. If we needed some long-term care, we'd go to a full shelter opening. Basically what that says. And then post-event demobilization. Again, we're returning the shelter to normal as soon as quickly. We want to move people back to their homes once they get power back and heat back so that the school can reopen. We want to basically, and we're going to debrief with shelter staff, public safety staff, and basically the, at the end of everything, the question is what could we have done better? What, what, you know, hopefully we did a great job and everyone was happy, but what could we do better next time? Do we need a different piece of equipment? Do we need more staff? You know, what, how can we kind of polish this up and make it a better product the next time? Occasionally, there's reimbursement procedures with Mima and FEMA if we meet, you know, a large-scale situation and that can go on for years.
Any, any named storm though, we can get some reimbursement, right?
I think if there's a, a level of expense met across either the county or the state, I'm not sure what the formula is.
Right. It has to be, you know, designated and it takes years, just so you know, it's a reimbursement. Like five years later, you get a check.
Right. You'll get the money back.
Yep.
And we had to put the question slide on a storm.
Jamie?
All right. Just mainly for people who are listening to.
Um, just mainly for people who are listening to, for animals, dogs and cats, what is the protocol?
So, our, our shelter is animal friendly.
Yep.
And actually, our Animal Control Officer here has gotten involved already with going through the high school, planning for that. So we should be, we have equipment, we have kennels for dogs. You know, mats to lay down on the floor so we don't damage anything at the school. So we are, we are an animal-friendly shelter and we're ready for that.
But the Warming Center is not.
Correct, correct.
Okay, just to remind folks of that. So the Warming Center is just for humans and then shelter, shelter is for.
Correct, correct.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? I know there were some questions about wildfires.
Yeah.
I'd like to just jump in. Yeah, just to jump in if that's okay. Chief, thanks for this really great explanation. I think I'm the one coming up to speed on this, especially on the board. And I would assume that the, the implementation of all these hydrants all over town. Brings a, a great relief to everyone who is aware and has watched the wildfires on the West Coast. It's just been insane. But seriously, with respect to the hydrants, I mean, do we test all of those on a regular basis? This, this must put us in a different category of, of preparation and safety, as far as I could see.
It has put us in a different situation. That because the hydrant system is very new, it doesn't need to be tested right now. However, as we move into having the hydrants, I think it, like the 10-year mark. They are tested, the wells are tested. We had the unfortunate opportunity to use the hydrants again. Friday night, and I will tell you that, that house fire that we had, it was a save because we had water. If this had happened five years ago, it may have been a much different outcome. But we were able to have water, we had, and we never lost water. So that, the fact that we have the hydrant system in town now is, it's a game changer for us.
Yeah.
And the reason, I, I just want to interrupt one second. The reason we built the second water tower is to make sure that the water pressure is continuous even in August, even during a huge fire. So those tanks are both fill and they automatically start to fill from the well anytime the levels drop. And the, the, all the hydrants and the, the water wells are tested monthly. All the hydrants are also flushed regularly. So they can see what the pressure is.
I just wanted to, to jump in and, and thank both chiefs for taking the time to explain all this. And I think it's one of the things that shows how money can be very well spent in this town. And I think this was a game changer and I appreciate the, the information. I'm sure a lot of other people do as well.
And I just want to talk really briefly about the wildfires. I know a lot of people are concerned that maybe. Something that is similar to what's happening in California can happen here. We need to recognize that their climate out in California is much different than ours. We have a lot more humidity. So we're not going to have the wildfires that we, that they have out in California. Can a brush fire wildfire happen here? Yes, we're very well-prepared. Next door at the Fire Department, but also through the county and through the state, through the state mobilization plan. Where we can move equipment around and that was really evident in the fall. When we were in red flag warnings and the dryness, but it also. You know, we could be headed in that direction again with the, the dryness that we saw last fall, this spring. And I would just, you know, I'm going to go out on a public education stance about what people need to do in their own homes. We do have a lot of land here in town that is conservation land. And I have been speaking with Alex with the Conservation Commission on how to clean up some of the excess fire load. That we have on public lands, specifically in Wiley Park, in some other places. Because we don't want to add more fuel load with the potential of a fire. So I have been working with that and I'm going to be, as we move into, we are in brush burning season right now. I watch the weather very carefully, all the time. I didn't take it very lightly when I had to suspend all open burning in the fall, but if we have to, we will.
And I, we can't underestimate that Code Red. Signing up for Code Red is pivotal, especially if, if you're a part-time resident taxpayer. It's especially important because you're not here, you're not going to see the weather or what's happening. So we can text you immediately, we can do the robo-calls that Adam does so well and we can let you know what's going on.
We actually have family members of residents here that, that might live elsewhere that are on the Code Red.
That's a great idea too, yeah.
All right, thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a licensing, entertainment license for local break.
A renewal?
So they, no, they've applied since it's a new manager. They needed to reapply.
Okay.
And they're also, they're open for lunch, so I think they're wanting to do some.
Change 11, 11 to, 11 AM to 10 PM is what the request says. I think.
And the 10 PM is consistent with our other licenses?
Oh, they're, most of them go later. And this is just acoustic.
Acoustic indoors, yeah.
Indoors acoustic.
And they basically close the food down at 10, I think. I think it closes at 10.
Yeah.
My memory is correct, yeah.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I move we approve the entertainment license for Chase's Dad, Inc., DBA Local Break.
I'll second that.
They have Greek food.
All right, any more discussion?
No pressure.
All right, all in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Myself, aye. Five to zero. All right, next, Fire Department surplus.
Yeah, I'm sorry Lisa left. When I first saw this on the agenda, I thought, oh, we're going to get money back from the Fire Department. But disappointed, but that's all right. Maybe next year.
I, oh, do you need a motion?
Yes.
I move we accept the items as surplus. As in our listed, listed. I don't know why I was so ambitious about making the motion. I, I vote that we approve the Declaration of Surplus from the Fire Department.
Perfect, yeah.
I'll second.
All right, all right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye. All right, Farmer's Market.
Yay!
All right.
Nice.
So excited.
We were all very excited to hear about this.
As you know, we like to try, take advantage of our, the skills and knowledge that a lot of our employees have. And create a, create a fun environment for them. And Mira is certainly filled a lot of different roles. But one of the things she does is go to Farmer's Markets herself and has an interest and a lot of contacts in that area. So when we were thinking of it about interim uses for tea time, it seemed like a great fit. And we knew that the Select Board had been interested in, in this for a number of years. So Mira seemed like a great fit. So I'm going to turn it over to Mira and thank her for all your work and effort on this. And she, end of the day here, what we are looking for is any feedback you have and approval of rules and regulations.
All right.
And is your microphone on in case you need to say something? Is it green? Yeah, there we go. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Mira Milkova. And I've been working for, for the town for a couple of years now on various projects. I have to say, I was very honored and happy to, when Rich told me that I can help with the Farmer's Market. Because it was about last year or more than that, when people have been asking me like, why isn't there a Farmer's Market in Eastham? And I had no answer, but when finally the rumor was out, like that this is happening and I can be part of it, I was very, very thrilled. I reached out to a lot of people, I made a lot of connections and it's. I'm overwhelmed by the support of people who want this to happen.
Great.
And from P-Town to Mashpee, there's so many, there's so much. And actually beyond that, I reached to Farmer's Markets in Massachusetts in general. And I can tell you, everybody is there to support you. Everybody wants to see this. Everybody wants to have a good food system. So right now, our hope is after the rules and regulations are approved, to find two vendors who accept SNAP and WIC benefits. So we can actually be a certified Farmer's Market who do that. And there's so many other beautiful programs that we'll see how this year goes, but next, for next year, I have a lot of ideas.
Great.
It's going to be beautiful.
Wow.
It's great.
No, it, it sounds wonderful. I was, I was reading through this and. The only thing I was curious about, like insurance, vendors' insurance, how, how does that work?
So every vendor, depending on what they're offering, should be carrying their own liability insurance. We as a town have our insurance and we do cover Farmer's Market. However, like depending on what they're offering, they have to have their own. And they'll have to list the, the town as an additional insured.
They're pretty easy to get.
Okay.
It's very easy, yes.
Okay.
I have one, one question, yeah. If, if you look at the rules and regulations. Number eight, permitted market items. They've got baked goods and other processed specialty foods can be sold with approval of the Farmer's Market and so forth. And I understand that, but then when you go down to the guidelines in product eligibility, there's no. Link there to the baked or processed food, it seems to just say no. So we need, so I think you.
No, it says yes.
No.
No?
No?
Says yes in eight, it doesn't say it in three, in three.
It's produced by vendor. Would that not cover it?
So in a product eligibility, so this in Farmer's Market is a producer's market, this means of course.
Raised cockerel or produced by the vendor.
The vendor with the Barnstable County.
So there's a different health standard for a prepackaged food than for food that you make or buy or, so I think that's.
I just wanted to make sure it was, it was. There was no inconsistency. I want to make sure there was no inconsistency between the two. Between the product eligibility and the guidelines and whatever eight was titled in the regs, permitted market items. So, just. That, that's, I got the, I got the, the response is, okay, I understand it. I think it works. And if you have a problem, next year we can fix it.
I have another question. Can I jump in?
Sure, Bob.
So this is at T-Time, correct?
Yes. We have a map. I don't think it was in the packet, but.
Yeah.
Right, I just want to make sure.
That map is of.
Yeah.
I, that was my question.
I was a little concerned in this, hopefully I'm, this is a no, non-issue. But I thought T-Time had deed restrictions on it, which is, you know, they wouldn't allow you to, to sell a package of Hostess Twinkies on that property. So that, I'm just concerned that, I remember that from my days on the zoning board. Are we, are we in a situation that's different now?
No.
Okay.
We're not. We, I mean, last year we've had shellfish there for three years now. And so we're adding a Farmer's Market and we're going to see if Stop &amp; Shop cares.
So we're just poking the bear, is what you're telling?
Exactly, yep.
Hell, not really.
Not really poking the bear, I just.
I, they don't want a grocery store. That's what they didn't want. And so they do know that all-encompassing deed restriction to make sure that some, how a grocery store can't work its way in there. I think for municipality, it's going to be a little different if they were to try to challenge us. And it's not a permanent thing.
And if they do, we'll move it to the green.
Okay, good stuff. I mean, you guys have, I assume considered this, which is fine.
We won't cancel the market.
Over to this, by the way, I think it's a great idea. One other question. Does the Farmer's Market Manager, is that a paid position and is that funded by the vendors?
As of standing right now, I will be the Farmer's Market Manager and this responsibility will be split between me and the Health Department. We have two volunteers and between the three of us, we'll be able to handle all the responsibilities of the Farmer's Market Manager. This is what I have for right now. We'll see how it goes. However, any, the fee that's had been proposed and suggested in the rules and regulations is not for profit. It's mostly to cover any expenses that we can acquire, inquire during the maintenance of the property for signage, for advertisement. It's not for profit, so.
No, I didn't think it was for profit. I was just wondering if it was self-funding. And if that position was funded by the vendor charges, vendor fees.
So now that the moment, luckily, as being part of Massachusetts Farmer's Markets. We, whenever there is a grant, we can apply for grants and can use those money to help support the Farmer's Manager we needed.
Okey-oke, thank you.
Right. I see there's a spot on the, on the map that says vendors only.
Parking.
Oh, parking, got it.
I think one of the things on the map is, is a conceptual plan and we have to convene a meeting of various stakeholders and kind of talk this out. But conceptually, I think we're all on the same page. It gives the DPW some directions, so you'll probably see them out there this week or soon. Kind of clearing, cleaning up this area where we're.
They've already done, they've already done some.
And we will be talking with the chief, both chiefs about public safety. And you can see it's a one-way flow, traffic flow, so you don't have people walking in between, going back and forth. And trying to make, put up signage for a right turn only.
Okay. So I'm guessing that the scallop truck wouldn't be up front anymore. They'd be within the market if they were there, if they were there.
They don't, they don't come at the same.
I know, I know, but if they wanted to.
But if there was something there, it'd probably be in the vendors' area, so there's no traffic flowing once the vendors are there.
Okay, my seamless pitch for the DPW when they're over there, because I go to Juggle Jam a lot. There are some like metal things.
Yeah, from the, from the golf.
And I, they're like sharp and pointy. So, um, so like right where the entrance is, like right to the left. And I, and there's like a hole, there's just, there's tripping hazards for little feet. And so if at some point they could do a sweep and yank those, that would be, that'd be great.
So we've done so many cleanups.
I know.
Yeah.
Crazy.
All right, so I guess what we, we're looking for a vote is to approve the guidelines. Is that correct?
And the fees.
And the fees.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the, the guidelines as, as listed for the Farmer's Market in Eastham. As well as the proposed fees for vendors.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? Jerry?
Does that motion include the rules and regulations as well?
Uh, it should, so I, I will amend my, my motion to include the regulations, rules and regulations as well as the vendor fees.
And the guidelines, okay.
That, that we said already, but yes, correct.
All right, any more discussion? All right, we'll vote. Bob?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Yes.
Suzanne? Jerry?
Yes.
And myself, aye.
Yay!
Thank you so much, Mira. So mid-June to Labor Day.
Yes.
To June.
Right on.
Every Friday.
Same as the no dogs on the beach timeline.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Market.
Yeah, there you go.
Eight, eight thirty in the morning, eight to noon.
Eight to noon.
Eight to noon.
Beautiful.
All right, thank you so much. Yeah, thanks for your work. All right, the FY25 Regional CDBG Grant.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll accept.
Yes.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll jump on the bandwagon again.
Again, I think, I don't know how many years we've been doing.
Thirty-five years.
Oh, there you go. I was going to guess almost forty.
Turo's turn this year, right? So I, I move we, uh, accept joining Turo at all. With the Regional CDBG Grants.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? I think we basically authorized you to sign it.
Right.
I think you have to sign it too, right?
She signs the.
Oh, actually I did sign something here. What did I sign?
Whatever. We got the motion.
Yes, there was one of them I had too. All right, we'll vote. Bob?
Absolutely, yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Myself, aye. All right.
Thank you.
We're mowing right through these. Town, now these are, that was, we could do that vote for one, for both.
Yeah, for both of them.
Town warrant review, we have a start here.
Yeah.
A read, just like looking at it. A read, just like looking at it.
We're just first glance, you notice anything glaring that.
Yeah.
Here, Jerry.
Yep.
Right away in the.
We updated today, so.
Oh, oh, is the constable's thing right? Five thirty PM in in the evening.
That and we changed the headers. All the headers were wrong too.
All right. I I had one that I really thought we should switch. Uh, ta- the taking, where is that one here? On four D.
Four D.
I I think we should switch it to highway four, stormwater remediation. And wastewater pump station. Put that one first. Stormwater because that may be the only thing we're gonna have on the warrant.
Well, but for future.
It's it's just a PR thing. It's nothing. Now, we're gonna, no, well, eventually, this is the first look and then we're gonna take them up and then do our rec- we're not doing recommendations.
I'm also hoping to squeeze some housing on that parcel too, eventually.
Oh, on that parcel, yeah. Well, it might be.
It's going to your control.
Make it as clear as possible in the heading, uh, I think helps Jackie.
Okay.
I think the legal reason though is the eminent domain, the legal reason is the stormwater and wastewater.
Yeah.
It's for a public good.
It's clearly eminent domain and and I and yeah, and I think stormwater, we know. We we've got, so that's why I would have put that first.
Um, the pre-town meeting, April twenty-first at five thirty is here.
Is that good for everybody?
That's great. I know we've had it at the library, but.
Eastern Monday, okay.
We really didn't need the big.
Is that bad to have an eastern Monday? We don't have many weeks, that's the problem.
You said April twenty-first?
April twenty-first, yeah.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
Um, wait, what is this?
The pre-town.
Pre-town meeting.
I don't know if this matters. Under, oh gosh. Twelve of the eleven, it says Board of Appeals. On page forty, and I didn't know if it should say zoning board of appeals. That's just an edit.
Oh, just on these big pages, you think? Oh, we have the updated one.
Yeah, sorry.
I don't know why I thought that.
Happen every time you eat, we're gonna have a new version.
I didn't, I thought it was, got updated.
Here at the library.
Here.
Okay, let me.
The, speaking of zoning, the presentation at the library was fantastic. Uh, last Wednesday, I went to the first session and it was pretty full.
Yeah, fifty people.
Oh, at least, yeah.
A bit less on the second session.
Was it?
It's great.
But uh, yeah, no, it was very good presentation and uh. Paul kind of scared everybody at first saying that they let AI do the this little slideshow, but I spit, it was quite good. It hit, you know, all their their strong points. Yeah, no, I it was, it was, yeah, frighteningly impressive.
I did want to point out to you that Article seven, the new zoning for the Eastham Quarter Special District. Is we are not, we were not planning on putting the whole text of that in the warrant. So we are, it says in the um. In the article, it says, a complete copy of the proposed amendments is on file with the town clerk's office and published at the town's website. And it gives the link. We will be doing Facebook posts and other flashes.
You don't have to put the whole thing in, because that was the fear.
We don't, but it has to be available.
Okay.
So and I, you know, I feel like this is a really important thing. We want people to be able to have access to it. So I'll put some at the COA, we'll put some at the library, we'll have them here, we'll put them online. But we're not gonna print, um, we're not gonna pay for mailing a hundred and ten extra pages to every household.
Right.
So I just wanted to point that out to you, because I gave that a lot of thought. I wasn't, you know, not sure about it, but we, our attorney was clear that we don't have to do it.
All right. When we um. Go through the articles uh and do it. Will uh community preservation committee be here to talk about their split? That they have and will we ask them, will they will they be here for it?
Their split. Like. Oh, to each.
The 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 what you put in, not the not the ten, ten, ten minimum, minimum, but the. Yeah, and why and why, let me get it so that you be prepared for it. Why would we want to restrict? Uh, the ability of the town or and CPC. Uh, say this money must go to housing, when if you put it in a general fund, you could use it for for housing and we. It it just, I don't see the reason to to restrict uh future town events. It's by putting more than ten percent in, because we can, you have the right to use the. General, the undesignedated, the general undesignedated for anything and we we can vote it there. So that's that's a question I'd like to hear. Um, when we go through and do our recommendations for this, because right at the moment, I just have a question, why?
Agreed, I have the same question.
Jamie?
Um, uh, I have a question about on Article six A, so page eleven for the real estate transfer fee. Do we include, wasn't there a like an amount that triggered that?
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Well, that's the question. I had a couple of things I was gonna point out.
Okay.
You want me to just kick off? So six A and six B are very similar to what happened in Provincetown. Um, Provincetown apparently does not have that limit. And so um.
Oh.
Also, they said half of one percent. I put it at one percent, because I think we had been talking about that in points of, so the percentage. Um, whether you want to limit are both key things. And I also added, and you may or may not feel this is appropriate, but for a discussion point. Uh, how Provincetown has it just for their their housing trust. And I put down directed to the housing trust and or wastewater stabilization as the select board.
Right.
Right, and we we talked about that.
We did talk about.
The other day and saying how wastewater really is a foundation for housing.
Right.
You have to, they they're tied, they're they're inextricably linked.
But it's written, it's if you sell, if you sell for ten dollars, you you owe one. You would have that one percent would apply to that ten.
Oh, not ten dollars, a hundred dollars is exempted.
Okay, a hundred dollars, okay, so you, so if you sell it for for ten thousand dollars, you that the one percent would do, whereas I. Earlier discussions that others I've heard was, you know, they had the things of a million or something of that sort.
Well, I've got some stats for you, just in case you were gonna ask, Jerry.
Come with stats, I think we would be.
You're rooting for May twentieth, I know, yes.
So uh, if it applied to all sales in two thousand twenty-four, uh, be eighty-two, just under eighty-two point two million dollars of sales. One percent's eight hundred and twenty-two thousand. Uh, two twenty-three was almost ninety-five million, would be about nine hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, but if you do it for sales over a million. Then those numbers drop, uh, twenty-four was twenty-five million, seven sixty-five would be just under two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And twenty-three was about two hundred and eighty-five thousand, over a million.
Okay, that's a huge. That's all, that's.
And if we're gonna do it, we would want it to be effective, and it is the buyer paying.
Are we, are we, are we stuck on one percent?
I think one percent is the one that was, that was this for the state.
We wanna make it, we wanna make it um easy to pass on the state level.
Right, because this is a home rule petition, this isn't a, we're deciding.
Right, because theirs was gonna be three percent, right?
And they, yeah.
You know, the other options, I didn't write it in this way, but you might, you since you brought it up, you might talk about this. You know, you could, again, just like you could determine wastewater or housing trust. Maybe annually you could determine the percentage up to a certain amount as well as.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was gonna say, that can, that can add up. I mean, I understand that we're trying to make some money here, trying to. And it makes sense to try to pull a rabbit out of a hat with some of the expenses we're trying to cover, but that's a big number, one percent.
But we're not trying to make money, Bob. We're trying to develop a funding stream for housing. We, right now, we have zero funding stream for housing. Other than the CPA funds, and so we're trying to build into the budget a funding stream for housing programs.
And wastewater.
Well, Rich insists that it be called wastewater too, but I'm looking to fund.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what I'm looking, by looking at a drafty draft. When we stuck on one percent, does it have to go to those two?
This is a drafty draft.
Yeah, and are those the two outcomes, right? Is is it?
We're talking about it with you so that you can opine and then it will become less drafty draft.
I got you. All right, well, that's that's good to know.
Yeah, that's a new one.
Provincetown was at one percent. Is that?
Half.
Half.
But they start at a hundred dollars, so they don't have a, they don't have a minimum.
Oh. Oh, okay, because the other part of this in this is the. Exceptions, exemptions, exemptions. Um, and.
Right, if you're transferring it to a family member and.
Has to be what's called a qualified sale, so if it's transfers or putting it into your trust, those don't, are not qualified sales.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't have to decide tonight, but think about that, because I think Provincetown probably went to the half percent because they were gonna just do it as a sweeping.
Oh, for everybody.
Transaction.
Well, and it is also interesting to note, as Julian mentioned at our last meeting, that the median homes price in Eastham is eight hundred thousand. Dollars. And so the. The closer you get to a million, you, the buyer, is that, like, you're still gonna buy the house.
Oh, yeah.
So I.
Yeah, it's, well, I want eight hundred thousand, it's eight thousand dollars.
It's a lot of money. It's significant.
To a half.
Right.
I mean, like I said, we just bought a piece of land in Maine and there was an out-of-state purchase tax of, I believe it was around one percent. You know, it wasn't of any, you know.
Yep.
It made sense, you know?
The um. So the, if we went, so a couple of things to think about, we put a. Raise the lower limit from a hundred dollars up to some other number.
Right.
And you told us a million, but you could do something different. And um. Or we could change the one percent to a half, three quarters, something of that sort, which would. That would re, that would also reduce it. Uh, those are things to think on. I mean, is there any thought to go higher than one? Anyone have any thought?
One other thought I would say to that was, and this gets a little wonky.
Right.
You know, all these things, we'd have to line up so that prior to the year starting, we knew what the rules were, so when there's closings, all the attorneys that. Do these closings know what they're supposed to do, but you could also. Uh, peg something to the average single-family home value and it could change every year. But, you know, it gets a little, makes it that much more harder to im- implement and maintain year over year.
Yeah, and I I think the mindset between the one percent that is that it was a compromise, that because this was something that we tried to. See move forward in the past, it actually has been reduced.
From three to one.
From three to one, with the hope that this would then be more agreeable.
And I don't know that's written in here, because they didn't do it this way, but I suspect that, for example, if you did say a million dollars. It doesn't make, if somebody buys a one and a half million dollar house, that they're paying the tax on the full one and a half.
Right, it's just the half.
The amount over the million.
Yes, oh, oh, okay, I see.
You know, we'd have to.
So same with five hundred thousand.
Where where it is, sure. The the other thing is that this doesn't, this applies to. Every transaction, not just homes.
Yes.
Just land, you know, I've had a piece of land to sell, it applies that, does it apply to commercial?
No, land here.
Real estate.
There's just real estate.
Residential real estate.
It, does it say residential in there? Any real property properties situated in the town of Eastham?
Yeah.
So it would apply, so if I. Brick house, you know, so if 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 I own Brick House and I want to sell it, then it would apply to that sale. At least the way this is written, like, the way, at least it's the way it's written at the moment.
To the buyer.
Buyer, yeah, but but the the.
Commercial property would also be.
Subject to it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay.
Is is that the case in P Town and uh elsewhere, it's commercial as well as?
That's how it was written in.
Yeah, there's no commercial exemption or anything.
Yeah, I didn't see a commercial exemption, but. Yeah. All right.
I mean, it's it's a home rule petition that we're hoping that the state takes up.
Right.
Right.
And so.
So this isn't like, once it's voted, it starts to go to the state, the state has to.
And so whatever, I'm. I am into whatever gets this. Going to the state in a way that is like the most agreeable and um, I guess we can put our, like. Ideal transfer fee scenario, um, but. Again, I think it needs to be something that the state would consider.
I think Julie, the way he was talking, like, he'd like to see a lot of the towns do it, so I'm I'm guessing we should all try to be kind of on the same page. So that's why Rich got Provincetown.
Yeah, but I I don't think the nuance is important. I think once they.
Messages.
The only thing that I just noticed is that it's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I know that Provincetown has another trust fund that's not affordable.
Oh, I thought about that. I don't think, and we'll have to verify.
We wouldn't be able to use this for leased.
No, I don't, I don't think so. We'll have to verify this through legal though, right? But if somebody makes a contribution to the housing trust, Affordable Housing Trust. Their money isn't restricted to eighty percent or whatever their limitation is. You can give it and they can accept a contribution.
No, it depends, because it depends on where you get the money from that restricts it.
So the reason, the housing trust is restricted because they're getting it from CPA.
Okay.
Um, so, but we will have to, we should definitely verify that when we get legal to review this. I was thinking of them more as the recipient to help administer the program, but not that we're restricting it to certain AMI.
Right, that's what I wanted to make me sure.
Is the town interested in pursuing the other type of trust?
We try, we we've already tried.
Well, didn't the?
No, I mean for the under, is it not under seasonal communities to do?
Well, we could do that with the seasonal communities, or if it's problematic, we just do not do it and make up our own thing if that's legislation and have a.
Stabilization.
Housing stabilization fund.
Okay.
Just call it that.
Right.
Okay.
I just don't want to, I don't want it to go to eighty percent AMI or below, because then some of our rental programs won't. Won't be able to fund them.
Um, I had a question, speaking of seasonal communities. Town meet, I mean, it's on the warrant, so presumably town meeting has to accept the designation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, even though we're in the statute, the town has to accept it. I don't know how that works. I mean. It's the way it works. Welcome to Massachusetts.
I just also want to comment on six B, that is language related to residential tax exemption.
Sixteen?
Six B.
The uh, RTE for year-round rentals.
So a non-resident that rents their property to a. Resident.
Oh, right.
On a year-round basis.
I'm more of, when we get to it, I'm more of, let's see what happens first before we go into that, but. I'm not.
But I think it takes time to get this through the pipeline, so I don't think you want to wait if we.
Yeah, yeah, it could get people.
But yeah, I, listen, I understand. Just saying my 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 thought on that, that's all.
Yeah, Jerry, what was your thought on it? I'm sorry.
My thought is to take a look and see what happens as we go through RTE, see what it is, go a year, and then look at this rather than throw it on. All at once. That's that's all. And it's just a thought. I haven't had any discussion with it with staff or or anything. It's just, I I raise it so when we get to it. When it's time, we can discuss it, because you know, I'll I'll ask the question.
That honestly, that was my first reaction to this when we had mentioned it a while back too.
About not putting it on?
Right, that I did not want it on, um, that I wanted to kind of take one thing at a time. Um, I also understand that it is of benefit for year-round housing though, like the.
It is.
That's the point of it. So I guess at this point, I'm I'm kind of like fifty-fifty, right? Like I see both sides on that.
And and there's probably people in town who do rent.
Year round.
Year round already, who could immediately take advantage.
That seasonal rental their home and might not receive the RTE, but now could receive the RTE. If they make their home a year-round rental.
Or they could also do the lease to locals, so.
I was gonna say, um, now you, now that you started talking.
Right.
Yeah, let's hear it, Rich.
Yeah, I think we tend to overcomplicate the things sometimes, and I think the simplest things to do is we're, we're considering a lease to locals program and trying to get that up and running.
Right.
Just do that instead of
It's easier.
The whole complicated process and not wondering what may or may not happen as a result of it. And then you got an enforcement issue that's more difficult than if you just got a handful of people a year.
I like that.
All right, yeah, that works.
So the thought is to pull it? And, yeah, but we'd have to be able to speak to the lease to locals, I think, at Town Meeting at some point, like bring that into the conversation. You know, when, maybe when we are talking about, you know.
Well, hopefully we'll have some information on it out on Facebook and at Town Meeting because we're going to be leasing to locals.
And in the, Rich is good work. Article four, uh, D, uh, or four A, I think it is, uh, where you have all the monies for, out of free cash, the non-budget items. There's two hundred and fifty thousand, which we had spoken about at our budget introduction back in January for housing programs, so.
Where's, right.
It's in the transfer article.
Page nine.
Transfer to stable, oh, two hundred and fifty, fund housing programs, I see it, yep.
I also feel like too, it's going to be, maybe I'm wrong, but for staff, it's going to be such a big adjustment doing the RTE period. Then when you add another complicating factor also for year one, that could also even. But this wouldn't, it's special legislation, so it wouldn't go into effect.
Right away.
Probably this first year, anyway.
I.
I mean, that's.
Well, so if we're trying to launch lease to locals, which would, has a financial incentive for people to lease year round, would, I feel like this goes with it though, the RTE available for year round rentals.
It kind of works.
I don't think we would want to give people two.
Right.
Right.
Oh.
It does, yeah, usually when you do a lease to locals program, we designed our subsidy represent the differential between renting your house for a summer rate versus the amount of money you'd get renting it year round. And then make up that difference through the lease to locals program. So if that's your subsidy to make up that difference, but then you also give them something else, now they've gotten more than the difference. And, and maybe that's fine if that's what people are intending to do, but that was the theory of the subsidy amounts of, of the lease to locals, since it can make that coverage gap.
Because then they'd be getting a subsidy and. But that's not, lease to locals isn't ongoing.
It is.
For the.
Well, if we get the transfer tax, that's why I'd rather have you put your shoulder into the transfer tax because that funds what we're already trying to do.
All right.
This is a new something.
I mean, my, my whole thought with this was get ahead of it so that if it does take a while to have it on there, but I, I understand the.
Yeah.
The thought to not overcomplicate it this time.
I.
I just would hate to see somebody, if we do the RT, hate to see somebody lose their year round rental. But we can always push the lease to locals with the owner if.
Yeah.
If that's there.
Hurdle.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
All right. Rich, can you, you don't have to do it today, but it, but a question for me is, can you go through again, looking at, on, on page nine, the fund implementation of resi, of, of the RTE? What it is and under the scenario of whatever we assume, assume the, the, the same percentage, but that fifty percent of the people eligible apply and another a hundred percent of the people eligible apply. What, what does it do, do to this number? What happens to this number based on those scenarios in fiscal year twenty seven? How does it work? I just don't know exactly. It, is this an every year number? Or is it just the number?
So what, what were you referring to, Jerry? I missed the first one.
Fund implementation of residential tax exemptions, two hundred thousand dollars.
That's basically what we've got left for free cash. We have a little bit more, but I'm holding a little bit back for some things I know will be happening for this year. But, so that's what we have available to us.
We fund the overlay account every year.
Every year the overlay gets funded, but it's at the level that it ought to be at.
Right.
So the first year of implementation is the most intensive year that you do not get all your applicants upfront. And so there's likely to be, you know, based on what we've looked at other communities, um, and I forget the numbers, but a, a good amount of people that don't get their application beforehand, so they come in after the fact and we have to give them abatement and fund it out of the overlay.
Right.
And based on those numbers, I've given you an updated RTE projection when you came back the second time to discuss this. And I showed at the different percentages, how much we thought it would cost us in year one. And a five percent RTE was roughly two hundred thousand dollars, and that's what we've got available to us. A ten, you know, do, it's easy math, a ten percent RTE is four hundred.
Right, yeah.
Um.
And, and if, at the end of the year, if we don't use it, then it reverts back to.
If it's not used, it reverts back to free cash.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that's the thing that I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure on. I thought Rich one time said it's there, it stays.
But if it's not there, then we're going to be in trouble.
If not, they weren't, I, I'm not a po, I'm not a po.
If it's not there.
You gotta, you gotta be there, but, but if, so if we got a hundred percent people coming in before, no, before November bill goes out.
Then you wouldn't need it.
Two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars reverts back to, to free cash.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That's what I didn't fully understand.
And not just if we get a hundred percent, if nobody comes in for abatements because of the RTE or that sort of thing.
Yeah, whatever, right, whatever we don't, whatever we don't spend, whatever we don't spend goes back into free cash and you have to look at it again for fiscal twenty seven to say, what do I need to put it in there just in case because we may, every year we have to reapply.
I forget what the number was, Jerry, but the second, and maybe the second might be a little bit higher, but once you get rolling on this.
Third year.
That definitely by the third year, there's always going to be people that come in after the fact. And I had a number, I want to say maybe it was in a magnitude of thirteen or fifteen thousand, but that's something we can manage.
Right.
The general increase of, of the annual budget, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I wouldn't do anything extra in that case.
I just, I just needed to know what, what happens to it. We, we need it there, you have to have the money to give me the abatement and when I, because I come in, I'm Johnny come lately and, and that kind of thing, but, uh, but what happens with it afterwards, or if we get great participation, what happens? That's all. Thank you.
All right.
Only other comment I had is, um, there's a thing in there on the prudent investor rule, and I just want to emphasize it has to do with trust funds. And there's a, only thing to say, I just put an information sheet from KP Law talking about this adoption of this provision, so.
I have a question. Are we just shotgunning these questions or are we going in sequence? Because I have a question.
Yeah, we're not.
All right, well, I'd, I'd like to know about, um, like article nine A. Um, let's see.
That's a petitioned article.
Yeah, I understand. Does that mean that it's on or needs more signature?
No, it's on.
It's on.
And do they always come at the end?
Needed ten signatures, they got them, they got them approved, it's on.
Both of those are non-binding referendums.
Explain Lucy.
Both of the, the Town Meeting cannot order the Select Board to do something or to spend money on something. It's just not the way the system works. So basically, they are non-binding referendums. There, it's an ability for the Select Board to understand what the mood, what the will of Town Meeting voters are, but it is not, um, binding on them to change their vote because of it.
Well, what I was thinking is, that makes sense. It, it makes sense to me. But I would want to see something like that, if it's possible, upfront, because doesn't it drive what people would vote on with RTE? I mean, it might be RTE.
Perhaps, but we have never put a petitioned article at the front of the line. We need to do our business first.
Okay, I, I get it. I figured that was probably the, the reason why it was at the end of the, of the, uh, draft.
Yeah.
It just makes sense to me that if, if the townspeople were going to speak up and wanted to have more, uh, information regarding, you know, and a strategy for taxing the town, townspeople, that, that, we would want to know that upfront before any of the other voting, but this is a non-binding vote, so it doesn't matter where it is, quite frankly. I get it.
Yeah, and I think the other thing we need to understand is that there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of misinformation in that preamble to that article, one of which is that the Select Board can set any kind of a tax strategy because we have to follow Massachusetts general laws. We don't have an option to create another strategy. We have to use the tools that are available to us under Massachusetts general law. So there is no such thing that I know of as a local tax strategy.
Well, I think what.
Tax policy.
I, I understand. I would, I would assume that means, um, taking a look at what our expenditures are upcoming and making recommendations on how, how to best proceed.
But we do that every year, Bob. It's the capital budget, the five
Right.
year capital plan, the.
Well, the reason I'm.
Every year.
I'm absolutely on board with that. Point is that with this being such a, a new situation for the town, I thought, you know, having, somebody who comes in with, with not a fiscal or an emotional ti, tie to the answer can give us some totally, you know, uh, not, non-colored view, that's all. And that's, I thought that was probably a pretty good suggestion.
I'm gonna have to disagree, Bob, because I do feel like what we're seeing right now is this trend in society where you're seeing people say that we need private sector to come in and fix government. And I think that that's misleading, and I think that this article kind of rides on those coattails. Um, and I think it's misleading. I think it's going to be really important that everyone on the board really reads this thoroughly to understand the language and possibly the misuse of language in it. So that it can hopefully be clarified to better understand exactly what it's asking, what it's saying. Um, I think that we have resources available to us and we have percentages that make Massachusetts work. Um, from the State Assessor's Office to law resources to, I could keep going. But I, I think that it's important that this board be critical and aware when looking at petitioned articles, any petitioned article, um, to, to make sure that the information we communicate to our constituents is clear and accurate.
Well, I, I think that petitioned articles are probably the result of people being dissatisfied that government didn't put that on the warrant in the first place.
Yes.
Um, and what, what I, my experience in local government on the zoning board and harbor planning committee, for example, is that on, in both situations, we had consultants involved for multiple years in order to help us with grants, in order to help us with.
But that, I think that's a different scenario. I mean.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's local government making recommendations to the Select Board with consultants involved in the decision, in the recommendation process, that's all.
Five years ago, we added the position of Finance Director, and that is Rich's responsibility, and I think he does an amazing job. And if anyone
I agree.
wants to take the time to look at the operating budget that's online, to look at the capital plan, to look at the five-year plan, to understand that we do have a plan to pay for all the things that the town needs, then I think they would feel better about it.
And I take it a little differently. It might be a matter of interpretation, but I didn't read the, you know, the preamble of all that petitioned article to be as procedural as maybe others take it. I, I think it was more of an overarching tax policy plan, not financial planning plan.
Right, yeah.
Uh, which we do exceedingly well. Um, but I don't know, to Jackie's earlier point, I don't know how much leeway you have a tax policy plan when, um, Massachusetts general law provides for, or what it provides for our town to do or not do, so.
Right.
It strikes me just as very reactionary.
And I know people come from other places, but Massachusetts is a highly regulated environment. It is. And, you know, people either like that or they don't like that, but that is the law that we have to follow.
You know, and I think Julian stated it pretty clearly too. When they were here last week, one of the things they said was, in order for us to kind of unlock new tools for the towns to move forward and access different services for their community or fund streams, we have to use the tools that we have. And like Jackie said, there's only so many tools that were provided because Massachusetts is so structured. And so I think that's kind of what the path we take is to follow what's available to show we're using what the state provides in hopes that they will continue to provide more and better tools.
I, I understand your arguments and I appreciate them. I, I didn't think that a consultant over our shoulder looking at, at a high level what we're spending and how we're doing it is a bad thing. I agree that it could certainly be reactionary. Um, and it's probably reactionary because of the, the amount of, the, the taxes that, what's, what's happened to our taxes over the last few years. And if that's the way we. And that's, that's the way we handle a petitioned article. I, I, I get it.
I, you know, I, the thing with the taxes over the last couple of years, I mean, we, every penny that is spent was approved at Town Meeting. It's not like.
I, I, is that Town Meeting? I'm, I'm sure, I absolutely understand. I totally get it.
And when we were at.
Yeah.
I totally get what you're saying. I mean, it's not, this is not an argument for me. It's a suggestion that we would have put this upfront. But you're telling me this doesn't really have any legs with respect to how we make these decisions, and so I'm, I'm, I get it.
Yeah, and there's no funding even sourced in it for hiring someone.
Yeah, Bob, my earlier comment, what I tried to mean is, um, I don't, and again, the way I read it, and perhaps the petitioner will tell us more clearly, but I didn't take it as they want someone to look over shoulder of how we're spending our money or how we're developing our budget. So again, I think that would be an absolute waste because we do exceedingly well job at doing that. I think it was more of, of the policy development of how we tax residents and, and how does this, like, make decisions regarding taxes, not necessarily the spending or the operating budget or the capital budget.
No, I agree. It's a strategic idea. It's not, it's not, how, how we spend our money is more in terms of policy. That's what I was trying to, uh, allude to. But there, nobody's looking over at the, uh, spreadsheets. That's not what I thought.
And Bob, I'm sure that there will be questions throughout Town Meeting on some of these other issues because, as you're correct, it, it suggests that we should not do anything, which is kind of crippling for the town. But anyway, that's basically what the petitioned article is suggesting. So I'm sure people may ask questions about that. I, I won't be able to interpret that, that, so the petitioner will have to, you know, get up and answer some of these questions because I'm not sure how we would.
No, that's, that's fair. I don't know how we would either. I'm just, I, I think that if we were going to, if this had some type of traction, if this had legs, if this had meaning in our, our strategy process and our, and how we're spending our money, then we would put it up front with a warrant. But it just doesn't work that way with a petitioned article. Totally, I totally understand.
And.
One quick, I'll ask Peter and Mary, you're here, well, is the Finance Committee going to invite the petitioners to your meeting when you go, you, you will be inviting them? Fertilizing the other, you'll be inviting them, think, okay, so we'll keep an eye on that, Bob. You might want to
Tune into that.
Hook into the Finance Committee, um, meeting when they look at the warrant. Because that's, uh, a time when there's a lot of time listening to them. That's great.
Amy, you were gonna say, in addition, there's not a funding.
Right.
Like, consultants, consultants aren't free and I personally don't, wouldn't. I think we do a really great job of planning in Eastham, and we have a, the Strategic Planning Committee, and we have the five-year capital and the five. But there's a lot of work that goes into looking at the town finances, and I don't think we need a consulting firm to, to pay them however much money and the timeline is
Drafty draft.
Also unrealistic.
Exactly.
All right. We gone through?
All right. Any other questions on this? I mean, again, it's the drafty draft, Bob.
Oh, wait, I did have a question. Was there any thought to putting citizens petition after the article? I know we haven't.
Which article?
Uh, after the citizens, after the citizens petitions. Um, and this is me being terribly annoying. Um, having filmed Brewster's Town Meetings, but it always says citizens petition, and then it says what the name of the article was and, um.
Like it calls out Susan's.
Yeah, it like makes it very obvious that it is a.
Oh, it's petitioned article?
Yeah, it says it, like.
Well, we have a separate section.
Yeah, petitioned articles, that's.
Oh, oh, that's where we do it.
Yeah, so the index, yeah.
I just wanted to add like the header maybe.
I think I might want to change the order of nine A and nine B, just because I think we'll probably talk about nine A a lot longer than nine B, so I'd probably want to get nine B done and then go to nine A.
It does say it there, you're right.
All right.
I just, you know, went straight to the, the header.
This is a first. Sorry.
Drafty draft.
A drafty draft.
Drafty draft, I like that, Bob, you win.
Bob, you will be immortalized.
Gotcha.
As drafty draft.
All right. All right. We done town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh, town manager's report.
I don't have anything new. Cause I haven't.
It was only a week.
Yeah, it was only a week.
And she had a nice vacation, so.
Right.
I had a little vacation.
Well-deserved vacation. All right, new upcoming agenda items, I need, or things that need follow-up.
Can I just ask? When possibly the full RTE conversation will make it back onto the agenda? Cause at some point, you know, we were.
Yeah, we need to talk about.
We were gonna like discuss it again and I feel like, I mean, I was willing to dribble in comments about it and now until we have that discussion again, but it might be helpful, um.
Well, assessors office has been hard at work, coming up with the process, coming up with the forums.
Okay.
And coming up with mailers that we're getting ready to send out, um, to make people aware of it.
Okay.
Um, so we can give you an update at a future meeting on that effort, uh, but you also will have to talk about it.
Percentage.
It.
Right, you had decision.
Four A, um, on the level of funding, uh, that kind of drives part of the discussion, too.
But we only, that was another question, we only put in fifty K to that fund and I thought we were really talking about bigger numbers.
Two hundred, it's two hundred. No, he's talking about.
Taxpayer assistance. Which was fifty thousand that we talked about and I raised putting in more. But that was in my, well, in my opposition to RTE, that this was an, this is an alternative to I, RTE, which was means-based. And I thought, uh, was the right way to go. But that's, that's, Bob, that's why we, that's where the greater than fifty thousand was there, then, then if.
And I'm with you, I, I remember the conversation, I just was disappointed that we hadn't put more money into that because we might end up using that as well.
Yep.
Well, yeah, that's, that's true, but we do have, have to put two hundred thousand dollars in, well.
Yeah, I know, it's year one, two hundred K, right, right.
Yeah, we are, we already have to do that, so.
So we're being, we're handcuffed a little bit more on that fund, I get it.
Well, we really only planned to put fifty in this year, to be honest. That was from the beginning, yeah. That was from the beginning, Jerry brought up putting more in when we were discussing the RTE, no, no, no. But really the plan was fifty, since it's new. And then we're gonna do more. And, you know, maybe that two hundred thousand, we won't need it for the overlay and then that could go in there next year, so.
Got it.
Optimistic.
Which are housing. Wait, yeah, so I, assessors are, are, are working on it and because you need decision points from us at some point.
Just one.
Just one.
The percentage now.
Percentage.
When do we need that?
The process is not up to you to decide, it's, again, the state of Massachusetts, so.
No, we can update you on the processes so you're aware of it.
Just so you know what the process is, but you can't make decisions about the process.
You know, we, you kind of need a decision on the percentage. Because that has financial ramifications, some of which we can fund, i.e. five percent. And some which we can't, if you were to do thirty-five percent, right? Which I know yet it's not what you're thinking, but just being extremely, yeah.
When do you need that? Cause to doing when we go on the warrant, because we clearly have to make that decision and the warrant, but that's probably too late for, because if we change that number and it goes above two hundred thousand, you've got to go, uh, relook at the budget.
Well, you, your vote is in August. And so this is why we recommended you to, to address this December and January every year so we could do all this.
Right.
And our recommendation is going to be what we think we, you can afford to do. You know, if there's a, we'll try to follow, follow the direction of the board of what you're trying to accomplish. And give you as much as we think we can give you. And, you know, and you always reserve the right to change your mind and, you know, not do something else where you recommend it and use it for, you know, so.
But, but let, we go to town meeting and let's say we, the drafty draft is real and, uh, and it's got two hundred thousand in there. And it's pa, passes town meeting. Then in August, the select board can vote to go to twenty percent and then what happens? Cause we've already passed the budget with only two hundred thousand on it.
That's a nightmare, Jerry.
Yeah.
Then we'd have a deficit in our.
I would, yeah.
Have a deficit in our.
Yeah, well, I, I understand.
Both that way, Chair?
But we would know, we would know, no, we would know by August, how many.
I just find, no.
How many people have applied by August? So we would then make the determination on the rate, seeing how many. Like he, if we put the two hundred thousand in, that would cover, I thought it was ten percent.
Five, two hundred thousand.
Two hundred, if we get, what, what kind of turnout?
It's forty percent.
Forty percent? But if we get, say, sixty percent or better.
Right, so we will know more information in August or early, so, you know, we would probably push our hearing off a little bit to get as much as we can in. And we'll know, you know, I would be, personally, I would be surprised if we know everything we think we need to know, so. Um, but you're right, maybe there's an amazing, Eastham's done amazing things and turns out amazingly well for various things. So maybe they will on this and we'll have more information and then we'll can reevaluate and say, well, hey, we had ninety percent turnout, so that two hundred thousand goes this much further now.
Yep, right.
But if the most we have to work with is two hundred thousand, that's going to really.
That's going to, yeah.
Dictate what the percentage would be.
I think that the board is reasonable enough to.
Yeah, we're not going to jump.
Yeah.
Higher and. Push everybody up to the edge of the cliff, hoping they don't fall off.
Well, this is just the first time, so I'm trying, we're trying to understand.
And we're gonna be.
How those numbers work and how it shifts.
On, yeah. That's a good question, this is curious.
Amy? Totally shifting, um. I'm realizing too, cause I will, just so, I'm not sure how things are going to be coming up for us to be voting on and things like that. I will not be here March thirty-first or April seventh.
We do not have a March thirty-first meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Seventeenth to the twenty-fourth.
Great.
And then April.
April seventh, I will not be here.
Not be here.
And I will not be blue zoom.
So I think Bob.
April seventh is after.
Af couldn't be here on the twen, on the seventeenth, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so I think we should do the RTE, try to do that discussion on the twenty-fourth. But we'll do that when we.
I don't think I'll make the seven, April seventh either.
April seventh. Okay.
You know, April seventh is too late, yeah, March thirty-first, if you needed that date, would be the absolute drop dead date.
Because April seventh is after.
Thing that needs to get printed into the warrant.
That's why I wanted to bring all that up now, cause I was like.
Yeah, so I think March twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Will, will. RTE discussion.
Wait a minute, is that the pre-town meeting?
No, that's April twenty-first.
Sorry, that's April, losing my mind now.
It's relatable.
All right, minutes, there weren't any in the, she didn't upload them, I don't think, I didn't, I didn't see any.
No, I didn't.
Yeah. I just checked again. She took the old ones down, because the old ones were up this morning, but then the new ones, I don't know, maybe they went somewhere else, but I couldn't find them. Um, so any other business?
I don't remember, so.
Bob, have anything else?
I am good, thank you.
All right.
Hi, Mo Wijer.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Amy, Suzanne, Jerry.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thanks.